All right, we're going to call the Committee of the Whole to order so that all members of the Committee are present, as well as members of the Administration, and plenty of members of the public as well. We, first I'll make a motion to defer approving the minutes of our last meeting, we just don't have those quite ready yet.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to defer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And with that, we're going to pull up, as Clerk Buck has already done for us, a communication and detailing, summary, however you want to look at it, of Council's priorities that Council Members Kepel and Baker did the lion's share of trying to pull together all of the thoughts, priorities, questions, concerns that my colleagues and I had over the course of the last four or five meetings on the topic of the hospital redevelopment, hospital site redevelopment. So, if you would, Council Member Kepel, would you mind just giving us a quick rundown of this document, just so everybody knows what's in here? Again, virtually all of this is things that we've discussed over the course of the last month or so, but seeking to have one document that summarizes all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we start off with a communication. Councilwoman Baker really did a good chunk of the work on that, and I appreciate that. The second, or page three, you have sort of a flow chart of the main outcomes, priorities that we're seeking. So, all kind of around Council's fiduciary responsibility, and then the various attributes. These are things like the density and opportunity, affordable and accessible housing, sustainability, the Curtis Block, local business and community space. And then from there, we go into page four, five, six, seven, and eight. Are each of those desired priorities, outcomes, broken down with commentary over the last five weeks of conversation in community of the whole? And specifically, particularly our last committee of the whole, past Thursday, where Councilmembers had the opportunity to express specific priorities and commentary that they wanted included in this document. So, we tried our best to be faithful to that conversation. And then, on page nine, you have exhibits, which include the term sheet, mention several documents that will inform the design, particularly the community vision, which we agree is a great document to inform choices. So, on Exhibit A is a listing of the same priorities with the success statements. The community vision is written such that success looks like, and then it has statements. So, those success statements are under each of those council priorities. And then finally Exhibit B is the Power Clean Future Ohio document that Council Raider submitted with sustainable attributes for the Lakewood development. That is, in a nutshell, what is all included in this document.
Great. Councilwoman Baker, since you had a lot of time spent on this document as well, I wondered if you had any quick comments or thoughts on its crafting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Councilperson Kepel did a great job explaining it. I think he was just basically trying to distill what we've been talking about for the past five weeks, and kind of putting some, you know, information for the Administration to consider as we move forward with this process, because, you know, the timeline is achievable but tight, but, you know, so we want to give them all of our thoughts upfront, so we can ensure we can meet that timeline.
Well, I just want to thank the both of you for doing the lion's share of the work in putting this document together. I'll open up the floor for any comments or questions from my colleagues. Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very impressed and pleased with the work product that our colleagues have put together tonight, this evening. I know that's, you know, several intensive days of work, but this is beautiful. I think it's detailed while being flexible. It's specific, like we talked about, and it goes through the many bites of the elephant. So, this is setting a high bar for action going forward. We're going to have not only multi-page-supported and color-coded documents, but it's going to have charts and attachments and all the rest. So, I've got a few comments, but this really does hit 99% of what I was hoping and envisioning that Council could produce as a document. But I guess I'd like to ask a couple of things. First, what I envisioned would be that at the conclusion of this, and the beginning of the full, or during, at the appropriate time in our full Council agenda, we're going to have a vote, a formal vote, to support a version of this document, whatever changes or edits that Council makes. But it's going to have the backing, it's not just going to be a vote to receive and file, but it's going to have some more formal indication of Council's will, you know, such that it might be. You know, I don't know if it's going to pass four to two, or it's going to fail four to two, or pass six to zero, or what. But once we're done, to me, it's meaningful if there's a formal vote to support and back what we're saying in this document. So, is that the vision of the authors and the Chair?
If I may, and it's somewhat outlined here, that my hope would be to, for us to approve this document out of committee today, and then for us to move to substitute with the resolution with this document as an addendum to it, so that we then adopt the resolution, hopefully, with this added on as an addendum.
Okay, thanks. So, in other words, we would amend the resolution before the Committee in some form. This would be Exhibit A to the resolution.
Correct. And I suppose we could do that substitution out of committee, in committee?
And I think that's strong, because then, you know, and maybe we could have a refresher on the mechanics. So, Council has been asked by the Administration to approve a resolution, and the resolution itself approves notionally that the mayor can pursue negotiations, which have already begun, under the term sheet attached, which has already been executed by the mayor in Casto, prior to Council being, beginning this deliberation. So, we're, in both cases, with the base resolution as proposed, plus with the potential addendum that's in front of us tonight, issuing an advisory opinion, albeit, I hope, one that's taken very meaningfully. Are we on the same page about the mechanics or the legal parliamentary procedure?
I think so. I think so. And what I can really appreciate about this document being crafted, and I'd love to dive deeply into it if anybody is up for that, this is not something Council was asked to produce. This is simply something that we've devised to make sure that all of our discussions are summarized in a way that we all can get behind.
Yeah, and then, so I'll hold my, I've got three or four things on specific elements of this color chart, and they're not actually all that extensive, and they're all things we've talked about before. But one thing in this cover letter that I'd like to call out, it's the procedural part here. In our municipal government, it's the Administration's role to negotiate the development agreement, and Council's role to approve or reject that which is negotiated. Council intends, the resolution and the addendum, as a formal mechanism to provide feedback to help the Administration understand what would ensure a successful passage of the legislation associated with the development agreement. We're talking about a future development agreement. I don't know if we want to include the planned development legislation there as well, because that's implied. But in other words, you know, so this isn't a binding, this won't be binding instructions on the Administration, but it will be strongly advisory. And if, you know, I agree with the, this is a tight timeline. I mean, I would, we're hoping to break ground within nine months and have a ribbon cutting, or at least an occupancy in the office within 12. I mean, that's 2023, right? No? 2024?
I don't remember the timeline.
Okay. What is, the timeline is fast. I thought I saw at the last meeting, it said 12 months from now, the hope was, I mean, when is Roundstone hoping to move in?
I think 24. Okay.
24 months out. Okay, that's important clarification. Because I thought I saw the exact opposite, so I misread that, and thanks for the clarification. So, anyway, even as such, we don't have a lot of time to waste. So, this is about Council putting its cards on the table, such as that they might be, in the good faith and hope that the Administration is going to significantly incorporate those priorities, and there's all kinds of room in the wording here, to the degree possible, to the extent possible. Some of these things are exploratory, but if we're clear, and then we can have regular consultation as the work of the next nine months unfolds, to me, that's, now we're starting to look like we're getting a successful common ground and process, so.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, it's offices December 31st of '24, so the end of '24, and then the residential component is the end of '25.
Okay.
That's what the term sheet says.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock, if you had two or three points in the interest of getting this where we need to go.
Yes. So, exploring the possibility of finding a new home for 75 parking spaces for the clinic. I appreciate that the Administration indicated they're already interested in exploring that. Do we call that out in this document? I don't think I saw that explicitly.
Mr. Chair, I don't, the document doesn't specifically call out the 75 spaces, but it does call out the legal obligation to provide the Cleveland Clinic with parking spaces. So, we encourage creativity and negotiation in that sense.
I see it here. So, on page four, "Council fully understands the need for approximately 540 spaces in the garage. Support makes use of the legal obligation to provide the clinic with parking spaces. However, Council urges the Administration to be thoughtful about the garage, ensuring it is designed to be built, to be adapted to the future, in a whole series of ways." Okay, so is that sufficiently clear or understood, or is that something that we need to call out, or is it something that we address through just continued engagement between Council and the Administration?
I feel like the creativity is encouraged in this document, and I also feel like the 75 spaces is something we can't wiggle out of anyway, given the...
You can wiggle out of 25.
Okay.
Right, 25 can be off of the hospital site.
I see, okay.
And put somewhere else, but I think on the south part of Detroit, if I read it correctly. 15 need to be on the hospital site, as it's written today.
Thank you. Thank you. Meaning, this is happening. It's enshrined in the master agreement, if I'm not mistaken, with the Cleveland Clinic.
Yeah, and of course, we can't guarantee that right this moment, and it may not come to fruition. But the intent, though, that we explore is on, driving at.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we need to belabor the point further. Mr. Story or somebody from the Administration, would you care to, or Mr. Corrigan?
My statement through the Chair to Councilman Bullock is the same as last week. I endeavor, I've already started the dialogue. I'm hoping to find the right people at the Cleveland Clinic to, you know, hopefully get to a yes and not a no, and that's what I'm starting to do.
Super. Yeah, and explore.
Mr. Story, I'm working with them on a couple of real estate issues too, so if we want to talk offline about right folks.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I'm working with them on some other real estate issues, not here.
Sure.
But I, some of the folks I've been, we can talk about.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and some of the others of us on Council have some experience with them as well.
All hands on deck.
If helpful, if not, that's okay.
No, I...
But, right, I appreciate that. Okay, is it okay if I, please, charge ahead? All right, so the, let me see my own notes, I'm sorry. Oh, the, I saw, okay, so I saw in earlier draft this document about local business and establishing some targets or limits for trying to get more business from outside of Lakewood as opposed to inside of Lakewood. I do support that. I wonder if we could just kind of talk through the wording in this draft and see if we're as strong as we could be on that point.
Do you have recommended language?
I don't, but I don't. I would defer to my colleagues. I just...
Mr. Chair, what I think, you know, and this is the drafting process, right, between Councilperson Kepel and I, there's a little bit of a, you know, there's competing interest here, right? To be candid, right? Do you, do you try to say that you want new to market, so you're not kind of shuffling around the pie, or do you want to encourage local businesses that this is a space they can move to? So, I think that that's just a competing directive, right? And so, we left it silent, candidly, because we had a little bit of a competing kind of thoughts about it. So, it's ripe for discussion on the floor, I guess.
And this being a document that I would hope we would get consensus around, if there are areas where we don't quite have that consensus, we ought not include them.
That's the way I look at it. I mean, you know, I think it's important that we express our will, not like two people's will, or one person's will, or whatever. So, that's why I, you know, I thought Councilperson Kepel's edits to that were appropriate, and there are other things I cared more about, so.
Councilman Bullock, is there another, or would you like me to defer to someone else and come back?
Okay, yeah, the last one, well, for now, I want to talk later about Curtis Block, but the other one was on the sustainability. I think it's important to call out efficiency, energy efficiency, or weatherizing homes and insulation. That, in a lot of ways, is the foundation of so much. So, I wonder if we've got that clearly, you know, as prioritized as we might. Some of the other features, which I'm very much in favor of, I'm very appreciative of Councilman Raider for getting this excellent analysis and document, and then that's included here. Maybe it is built into the LEED standard language, so I'm welcome to be educated. It was just a refining point. You know, if you've got a leaky building with solar on it, you also want to fix the leaks.
There could be a small edit, Mr. Chair, to the, if you may, to address to Councilman Bullock's point.
Okay.
On the second box under sustainability, well-established efficiency certification goals would be, I think, you know, I...
Proper terminology.
Slightly more specific, that's all.
Yeah, one of the, in an earlier draft of the document, had the development should commit to high-efficiency Energy Star rated compliance amongst other sustainability best practices. So, we could add that as some dicta under one of the kind of topics.
And point of, just if, if we're intending to adjust this document in any way, shape, or form, which I'm, of course, perfectly amenable to, do we have a process to do that now, so that the document is ready for tonight?
One of us could take notes, or the clerk?
I don't know if anyone has a laptop out that they could make these adjustments on the fly. I'm sorry, I'm looking to the office.
I can pull it up and make the adjustments on the fly. And if I can just make a comment on that, I'm totally happy to add energy efficiency into it, just for, because we had put in the LEED equivalent, and as well as the Power Clean Future document, and the community vision, and the community vision, success statements on page 11, does, on point two of those, says energy efficiency, renewable energy, waste reduction, supply chain management, and composting. So, it is in there, but I would be perfectly happy to add it, you know, at a higher level in here. So, you tell me what you want it to say, and I'll edit.
I think if there will be another draft of this, it would be nice to have, to say well-established efficiency certifications, efficiency standards as a goal, sustainable design. And I had mentioned in the meeting, I'm sorry to take your time, Mr. Bullock, that, like, Energy Star certified is the lowest sort of tier of the three mentioned in the PCFO document. And so that, when the agreement comes back, like, I would hope that that would be there at the minimum, you know, that they would be reaching for that, or one of the other two higher tiers, being a LEED certified, being the more expensive one to do, or at least indicate to us that the criteria are somehow reached for or met, even though they may not have applied for those sort of more pricey certifications. So, if there's some way to embody that, that was kind of what I was...
I'm getting it.
I can embody that, yeah. I could do that.
Sorry, I had my mic off.
It's all right. I could hear you. I just want to thank Councilmembers Baker and Kepel for putting to this together. I think it accurately illustrates what, or then summarizes our conversations the past month, the direction that we all want to go. I think even especially, I think, not to steal anybody else's thunder, but I think in the conversation about the Curtis Block, I think the language there is appropriate, and I think it does reflect our position of that we're here to listen and do the will of the people, and taking all the facts, and then with all the data taken in, and all the options presented, to make a decision that's best for the city. And I think that does show that we're all ready and willing to hear from all sides and then make a decision, or review what is, when it comes to us eventually. But I think everywhere else is appropriate, and I appreciate all the work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I got to work on between the two meetings if we, yeah, okay, that's fine. So, no, thank you both for doing this. I really liked the community vision sections particularly. Like, I got to re-ignite, so this is great. And oh, thank you to the Council Clerk and Council Deputy Clerk too, for providing all the notes and doing all the extra work related with extra meetings, so thank you very much, for no extra pay, I might add. So, thank you for doing that very much. It means a lot to the process. Same thing to the staff at the city for pulling this all together and being here for us throughout the process. But I really did appreciate the community vision, touchstones, because that's something that I know the planning department uses. It also gives our spin on it, right? You kind of pulled out the things that we felt were more kind of related to our conversation, which took time. So, thank you for putting the time and energy into this. And I love the color-coded, and it makes it easy to read and understand, which is important, because this is something we want to share with the community more broadly, to make sure that you know that we're listening, and that, you know, this is also some of the conversations we've had in public comment. I see some of those reflected in here, and, you know, so I anticipate we'll be sharing this document on the Council website, in addition to publishing it somewhere on the Internet, so people can review it. Would that be your assumption?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Kepel, please.
I have a suggested edit to meet Councilman Reader and Councilman Bullock's. So, on point two of sustainability, how does this work? So, meet well-established certification standards in sustainable design, performance, and energy efficiency. Is that accurate? Should that be behind the performance? That's where it is currently, or can I, okay. So, meet well-established certification standards in sustainable design, comma, performance, parentheses, bronze or silver LEED equivalent gold, comma, and energy efficiency? Right. You, yep. Should I move to, do we need to move, or?
Let's include all our edits in one motion to substitute, or one final version anyway, that would move to substitute in the end. Councilman Bullock, if you wanted to talk Curtis Block, we could do that now.
Oh, I have my mic off, sorry, thanks. Okay, and I see we have a provision here of supporting inclusion of Council representation while developing, while negotiating the development agreement. I think that's strong and good. Appreciate that as well. The, and so, all right, if, it's time, let me pivot to the Curtis Block. So, the language, I agree with Councilman Schachner, I think accurately reflects the discussion on Council, preserve the building to the greatest extent possible, prioritize enforced corner street car facade in homage, design and the history throughout the project design. I also note that in the section on the Public Plaza, there's a call out to incorporate, I think it's the history of the Curtis Block in various ways there. So, that's all to the good. So, the wording here is good. Here's my suggestion, that we include as Exhibit C, the letter we got today from L-HAB, which is the body that we described here. Developer consultant make the best efforts to work with L-HAB throughout this process, Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. We have a letter dated today, signed by all of the board members, and it describes a number of things. So, that would be a support to this vision in the manner that Exhibits A and B support other aspects. So, that's all. Have the whole text right here. I've got a hard copy here, but... Anyone have anything else? I must say I'm surprised. Understood the Administration, any comments on the document? I know you only received it very recently.
I have a couple of comments, questions. Page one, fourth paragraph, final sentence, Mr. Chair, it says it is Council's intention that the attached document be incorporated into the development agreement that is intended to be brought to Council for approval later this year. Final sentence, page two, "We expect that our priorities as outlined in the addendum will be attached to Resolution 2022-14 and be fully considered throughout negotiations creating the development agreement." There's two verbs, considered, page two, page one, intended. I'm confused at what the marching orders are. I don't understand, and I'm asking directly what the marching orders are. Thank you.
Where's the first one?
The paragraph begins with "The purpose of this communication."
And the two verbs you were incorporated?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, is what I'm asking, is I, in good spirit, we've talked about this, but, and I understand Council's wishes, we've spent many, many hours on this, but if, I want to make sure I understand this, because it's pretty important. If you're stating that this has to be incorporated for you guys to approve it, that's a little different than what it states on page two.
Well, I'll, okay, understood. What's the, where's the other verb located? I'm sorry, want to?
I have a suggestion.
One moment, one moment.
It's the last sentence before, respectfully, Lakewood City Council.
So, it is my opinion, I'll speak for myself first, that this be a document that is considered throughout the negotiation. I'm a realist in this enough to say that we're giving you our work product from all of our negotiations and discussions, and that my expectation is that our hopes for the development will be considered throughout. It is not my assumption that every single thing that we're dictating in this document be included, because I just think that's an unrealistic expectation, in the interest of negotiation, horse trading, whatever you want to call it. I'm open to my colleagues' comments as well. Perhaps we need to adjust the letter. Councilmember Kepel?
Thanks, sir. So, I will speak for myself also, drafting this was trying to... to corral the conversation we've had over the last five weeks into sort of buckets of priorities. So, I would envision this, the term sheet talks about the community vision and some other documents, architectural standards and stuff, driving the design of the space, that those would be incorporated into that planning. And so, I envision this as another informative document that, you know, if you're thinking, well, would council rather have more family housing, or would they rather have, I don't know, a big fancy fountain in the middle of the community space? Do you have that information?
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you.
And I also think that, I mean, I don't know where the line is, but I suppose if we put this forward, and only, I don't think this will happen, but if only 20% of it is in any way, shape, or form showing in the final agreement, we might have a hard time approving it, you know? But, but that said, I would, I think there's a lot here that we've discussed that is actually consensus with the administration, and perhaps with the developer as well.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor.
I just want to add, a lot of things in this document have been thoroughly vetted and discussed during the course of the previous five meetings, and as mentioned, we're going to work with the community and try to incorporate as much community and council feedback as possible. But some of this, as we've discussed over the past five meetings, is just frankly not doable. So, I think Lakewood, pardon me, I think city council needs to understand that, and if this is not the development, then you should vote no tonight, because this document, a lot of it, you, we've went over this time and time again, that it's just not doable. So, I mean, that's the reality. You know, the comment here that Roundstone may be willing to take on more space if their growth pattern continues, we've already discussed that with Roundstone. They're where they need to be in terms of the office space. So, you know, council has a decision tonight. They can either vote on the development that we've planned, or not. I'm not going to, this is...
Councilman Schachner.
Thank you. To answer Mr. Story's concern, the way I've read this is about being fully considered throughout the negotiations. I see this as a summary of our conversations the past month, and what we've learned through the past month, and what we'd like to see happen. It says that we are looking to attach it to the term, to the resolution, which is approving the initial term sheet, which is actually simply approving the beginning of negotiations based on the term sheet. So, we see this as not necessarily an addendum to the, you correct me if I'm wrong, this is how I see it. It's not an addendum to the term sheet itself, it's an addendum to the resolution that's approving the mayor and her administration to begin negotiations, or to create a development agreement. I don't see as end-all, be-all, but at least an initial indication to all parties of what council's priorities are, what council wants to see throughout the process. And, yeah, I'll end it right there. Yes, John?
Through the chair, I appreciate what you're saying, Councilman, and that's, I just wanted to make sure, because as I read that sentence, I saw it the same way you did. I just wanted to make sure we were perfectly clear on the floor.
Might I suggest where we have incorporated into that we insert instead considered when drafting the development agreement, to mirror what we say in the, in the end of that, of that letter?
That's fine. And, Mr. Chair, if I can?
Please.
Just in case there's...
I'm sorry, I'm going to...
Considered when drafting. I'm going to write that down before my thought. One thing I just want to mention, because this is my work life, is drafting outcome statements, and when we do that, in my field, it's stating the 100% goal. That doesn't mean that we expect 100%. For instance, I would love 100% affordable and accessible housing. I know realistically, that's probably not going to happen, but if we aim for 100% accessible, let's say, or convertible to accessible, and we get to 50, you know, that's great. But like, you write it in the, in the goal term, not in the minimum required term, if that's helpful.
Councilman Bullock.
I agree with what the councilwoman just said. I thought it was a very succinctly stated way of putting it. I've got a suggestion for the, to change the language to answer Mr. Story's question, unless...
Somebody else has language they want to?
We might have already covered this, but it would say, in that sentence, it's council's intention that the priorities in the attached document be reflected in the development agreement. Would that not answer, so in other words, you'd be striking, be incorporated into, and say, be reflected in?
I made a suggested adjustment.
Yeah, I think he, yeah.
Already got that covered.
And I'd even be okay with best efforts to incorporate, right? I mean, what we're saying here is what, what we as a council would like to see, right? Understanding that the world isn't Pollyanna, right? Like, you're going to have to concede on certain things. But also, we have an important role here, right, which is to consider this and decide. And I, you know, to the mayor's point, you know, I think we can tonight, right, vote no, or, I mean, we can work with the administration and see what the actual development agreement looks like, right? You know, between now and then, there's a decent amount of time where market conditions can change a little bit, the project can flex. So, that's where I just want all of us to be thoughtful. And I think that's where, at least from my perspective, where I was coming from in drafting this, was how do we push for flexibility for the best outcome for the city? And I think it's incumbent upon us to take what the administration has presented to us, and be thoughtful and push back where appropriate, where we feel is appropriate. And this is an iterative process, right? I mean, the administration has said many times during the past five weeks that this is the beginning, not the end. So, I think we're just trying to get our vision statement and comments in at the beginning, rather than the end, because at the end, it's usually baked. So, that's where I came from. You know, certainly, in drafting this, you can see that the administration put a lot of work forward, and, and I know that sometimes when, you know, inherently in the executive and legislative kind of process, I think sometimes people think that, you know, well, this is the best we did, and you're saying it's not good enough. And I don't want, at least my intention in what we're doing today is not to say that, but it's to say, hey, can we grow it a little, right? And can we work with you? And if we can't, then we'll have a decision to make when the development agreement comes, is what we want to do as a council. But I think we'd be remiss not to express our intentions now in the process. So, that's where I am coming from, and I think, from my understanding, we are mostly coming from.
Thank you. Councilman Reader, and then Councilman Bullock.
Yeah, I mean, this, to me, are recommendations, just like the letter that was submitted by the Lakewood Advisory, Historical Advisory Board here, which I think we should include as well, just as being further guides for the community, that we kind of would hope that this administration would consider. And I mean, to reiterate, the conversation I had with Director Leininger on Thursday, I think is exactly what I'm expecting. I go for lead, or at least show us that she went for lead, come back to me and tell me why it didn't work. Like, that's acceptable, you know? But to come back in a few weeks and say like, oh, we never intended to do that, that it wouldn't work, you know, and not having that clear direction, just having that clarity. So, again, I appreciate the work that both Kepel and Baker put into this. I think it reflects well our conversation, and hopefully, it helps to have that kind of succinct advice moving forward, the recommendations as you move forward. I don't think any of us expect that, you know, vast majority, or I don't know, we'll see, whatever y'all can work out.
Well, and also, thank you. And when I, when I first got my day job and met with my reports, my direct reports for the first time, I told him a whole lot of things. We talked about a whole lot of things, and one of my key things was, hey, guys, you know, you do what you need to do, but, but please no surprises, because enough surprises come, you know, enough surprises come all the time that you can't control. If there's some that we can control and get ahead of quickly, you know, I would really appreciate it. And so, to that point, mayor and the administration, this might feel like a surprise, simply because it's something sent to you a few hours before, before our meeting tonight. My hope is that it gets considered. My hope is that it's not seen as some kind of adversarial move, and I want to state my commitment as a councilperson personally, to working as hard as I can with the administration, with the developer, and anyone else involved in this, to see that we don't have a pit in the middle of our city, and that we make something happen with this. We're not trying to scare away a developer, we're not trying to do anything other than work within our role as councilpeople for the betterment of our city. And I hope that ultimately, this document, that some iteration of, I hope we approve tonight, will be seen as that, seen as part of us being on your team, and not contrary to that, anything contrary to that.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Kepel.
Thank you, and thank you for that. And just to that point too, about the timeliness, it was our hope to get this out this morning. Councilman Baker and I have been working on this pretty diligently all weekend, and, you know, through our, as we're at work today, and our other jobs, and then doing this also. So, I do apologize that you are getting it so last minute. Part of the reason for that push was so that we could get it done today, so we could, hopefully, that would lead to a yes to passing the resolution in full council tonight. So, if it feels a little rushed, that's why, in order to honor the short time span and the request from the administration for the resolution to pass this evening.
Thank you. And just to reiterate that edit, and Chief Story, I appreciate you pointing out the sort of conflict there. But in the third, from the bottom paragraph on page one, beginning with the purpose, that the incorporated wording be adjusted to considered when drafting the development agreement.
Yeah, I have, Mr. Chair, I have it written as, it is council's intention that the attached document be fully considered throughout the negotiation of the development agreement that is intended to be brought to council for approval this year, later this year.
That works for me. Thank you.
Chair, I would prefer reflected, be reflected. That doesn't bind, but that's stronger. I mean, you can consider something, and it can be, I consider it, and it's not.
How about make best efforts to reflect?
Make best efforts to reflect. I mean, the attorneys, I just want to be, I mean, words matter, and we're talking about trying to be clear with our colleagues, so that we're minimizing confusion.
I mean, best efforts to reflect is the same as consider.
Yeah. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that whatever we choose will not change the development agreement.
The attorneys don't have a, see a change. I don't insist on it. I'm just trying to nail it down. So, but can we get?
An agreement to an agree isn't an, isn't an agreement, right? That's, and I think that's Chief Story's point as well, right? I mean, legally, this term sheet, there doesn't even need to be a resolution, right? It was, it's already signed, right? So, so this is our communication here is similar to the term sheet, right? It's not a legally binding document, it's just a reflection of our values and what we want to see, right? So...
It's a policy-setting document. To that extent, it's constructive for council to deliberate, develop some consensus amongst itself, and then deliberate, well, first of all, reflect the community input we're receiving, and then second, to convey that clearly to everybody, including the administration, our investment partners, et cetera. So, it's a constructive document. So, just so I'm clear, the, is there any material difference between consider versus make best efforts to reflect?
I don't think there is.
Okay. Nor I.
Okay, then I drop the point. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, and to the administration, right, I mean, this has been an intensive five weeks, and, you know, it's, five of the first 10 weeks have been at council, right, so maybe it's like this all the time. But I've received an incredible amount of calls with constituents where they wanted to go in-depth on some of these things. You know, I received an incredible amount of emails and communications from folks. So, you know, this, and it took a while to coalesce. So, while the administration has been working with this, you know, term sheet probably had drafts of it for a long time, it was kind of our first opportunity, and which is why it took five weeks for us to kind of get to a stage where we could write something down, because we were still digesting everything. And we're still digesting stuff, which is why some of our reflections, some of our intentions stated in here may not be realistic, right? But we're trying to work within the timeframe that the administration has set, and we're trying to do our level best, right, to, to do something that my kids' kids are going to be living in, right? So, this is hard, and we're here to make hard decisions and do hard things. So, you know, let's do it, right? And that's the way I look at it. So, it's, to me, it's no disrespect to the administration, it's just that, you know, this is what our values are as council, as we've reflected this, and what has been conveyed to us by the public, at least to me and constituents. And this is where we're at, and then we'll have a fun next six months to get to the development agreement.
Thank you. Any further comments? Pardon? Of course. I'd love to get there. Any other?
Just clarity on what's in the amendment.
Sure, I think we have two edits ultimately, one related to the sustainability piece and adding efficiency, at its core, adding efficiency to that terminology, and the other being to the cover letter, if you will, adjusting the word incorporated to be more like considered, and not reflected, as we've discussed.
I believe it was make best efforts to reflect, yeah. Consider as appropriate.
Mr. Chair, the Appendix C, adding as Appendix C, this letter from L-HAB, something that I think is important to include. We received a copy earlier today, council members did.
I'll only say that at first, at first blush, I do think that there's aspects of this letter that would be difficult for our developer to fulfill, at least as they've stated to us.
Understood. The appendices are, you know, supporting material that ties to the section in page, top of page eight. So, we have a short, you know, I can't control this screen, but the council recommends the administration, developer, consult, make best efforts to work with Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board throughout the process. So, having an Appendix C that reflects their, their letter to us, I think would be appropriate and helpful.
Okay. My colleagues have any other, any thoughts on the matter?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I like, it's already in the record, right? So, it's, they've submitted it to us. I suppose, you know, we could add a short statement to say, you know, the attached letter from Heritage Advisory Board outlining their intentions, or something like that. You know, like we've discussed at previous meetings, you know, there's, the Architectural Board of Review is going to have some work to do here with the certificate of appropriateness as far as what the plan is, as currently was presented, right, to alter the historic building. So, you know, I don't, it's already in the record. The question is whether we want to incorporate it into this document. Yeah, so I'd be open to everyone else's thoughts.
I mean, sorry.
Councilman Schachner, please.
To me, I got, it seems redundant, because, I mean, the process is the process, and I'm sure those involved in the term sheet and knowing what is going to future, future of this, know what the process in the Architectural Board of Review is for the certificate of appropriateness. I don't see, because to me, the letter states that we expect you to follow the procedures to do what needs to be done. It's not necessarily, well, it's advocating for full preservation, which I think has been adequately put on the record while the...
adequately put on the record while the developers were here, hearing that every meeting, for good reason. And that, I mean, I see that this communication is, although it does incorporate feedback, feedback we've received from residents, I believe these are council's priorities, not necessarily the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board's priorities. I mean, we have a statement about the Curtis Block, and the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board, we already say, please work closely with them, they will certainly have a say and stake in this, and we're supporting them having a say and stake in this. So I think adding the letter may add some unnecessary confusion or misinterpretation of intent from council's point of view.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Kepel.
I'm inclined to agree with that point of view, just because the downtown development advisory panel sent their own feedback, wouldn't the Lakewood, the Heritage Advisory Board's letter, I mean, those, they're speaking for their entities, and we're speaking for our entity. We reference the community vision, which is a citywide master visionary document, and then the sustainability information that Councilman Rader sought out, which we sort of universally adopted. So I feel like the Heritage Board, Heritage Advisory Board's letter would be more equivalent to the downtown development advisory board panel, downtown development advisory panels' letter, that they are representing their entities, whereas our document represents our entities. So I think it's good to have on the record, but I don't, I think it would be a little confusing to include in this document, because it would be like us including the advisory panels' document in our document, if that makes sense. So I, that's, that would be my hesitation.
Mr. Chair, you know, if the, if there's an amendment to the language, you know, happy to consider that. We call, I mean, there's a distinction here, so it's more detail, I wouldn't say that's redundant, because we, we also provide more detail in the other two attachments or exhibits. Those are points already covered, but that's the whole point of that exhibit. And we also, unlike the Citizens Advisory Board that Councilwoman Kepel just referenced, we're calling out L-HAB in our own document. I just think it's timely, they're more specific about all of the processes involved, as we've just spent quite a bit of time covering. This some total document isn't a requirement, it is to be considered, and so this is supporting detail to the section that is council's on the top of page eight. So I think it's valuable additional material. I thought Councilman Baker's suggestion is, you know, the wording, the potential wording was, was fine.
Okay, so any other discussion on the topic?
I support including it, actually. I think it does shade the conversation pretty well, it sums up a lot of what the community feels about the project. And L-HAB is a city board, is it not? A board that is appointed by, or at least associated with the city directly? So, I mean, just like last WAB would come and like, make a statement, you know, I consider that to have a little more weight than boards or commissions outside, outside the city. And the fact that we do reference it in our, the group in our document, it just helps to shade the conversation. Again, we just spent a few minutes talking about how, you know, this document isn't ironclad, it's not even on the level, I don't think, it's a, of a term sheet, which is still non-binding. It's an indication of where we hope to see things, and at least hope to hear some, you know, that it was considered in the agreement towards the end. I don't see there being any reason why we couldn't include it here, kind of memorialize it as part of the conversation, because it does sum up pretty well, I think, a large part of the conversation, at least the community's had. And I agree with a lot of the findings.
Okay, well, then, since it's 7:30 now, and council, our council meeting's supposed to start, and I'd like to get somewhere on this document, and I'm not hearing consensus on this specific point, I'd like to maybe go through and have us vote on approving, I think, three amendments to this document, and see where that lands us, and, and proceed from there. I'll first make a motion to amend the, the cover letter to change the word incorporated to considered when drafting, or the language that Councilmember Kepel described earlier.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And then, Councilwoman Bullock, you like to save the hard stuff to the end, so that's what I'm going to do. On the sustainability point, I'll move to amend the document to reflect efficiency standards as well as other goals in design and performance, et cetera, into the document as stated previously by Councilmember Kepel.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And then I'll entertain a motion on the appendix, or including the L-HAB letter.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, if I may. I'll recommend that we amend the top of section of the Curtis Block, the top of page eight, to read.
And if I may, I thought it was going to be, I was anticipating a motion to include their letter as an appendix to this document.
That's it, right. And so it would be to add at the end of the paragraph, such as, comma, such as, before the period, do you say, comma, such as?
I think, I...
Reflecting.
I'm not even sure how I'm going to vote on this amendment, but I'll give you the language.
It's fine, yeah. Otherwise, it'll take longer.
Yeah, you know, attached as exhibit C is Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board's, you know, letter on the topic.
So a new sentence at the end, so the motion, the amendment is to add a new sentence at the end that says, attached as exhibit C is Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board's letter on the topic, and then attach that letter as exhibit C.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, briefly.
Councilwoman Schechter.
Look, I am interested in seeing the, voting for or against this, it's not voting for or against the preservation of the Curtis Block. But I'm reading this letter, and I see a paragraph that says, "The purposes and language of the preservation ordinance compel the preservation of the entire Curtis Block structure and its site, not just one of the more façades," which is not accurate. Otherwise, there wouldn't be a process to go through, through the Architectural Board of Review and get a certificate of appropriateness. So I'm not in favor of putting something on the record, although you may or may not support the full preservation, to put something that is attached that council, no matter what we say, as this, what we put in front of it, it has the impetus of support from council, if it's included, and as the view of council, regardless if we say, oh, this is a letter from L-HAB. So I don't agree that the ordinance compels the preservation. I mean, it certainly encourages it, but that's just frankly inaccurate, and I can't support something that's not accurate.
Any further, thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Nay? And that motion does not pass. Thank you for the discussion. With that, I will move to recommend adoption of this document as substituted just now.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. With that, committee of the whole is adjourned, and we will, oh, did I miss something? The motion was to recommend adoption as substituted, so I believe we're okay. I'm looking at our clerk to make sure, and/or our law director. Okay. All right. All right, with that, truly, we are adjourned, and we will reconvene in about five minutes for our full council meeting. Thank you.